Hello and welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of June 3, 2019. Those members of the audience, please join the Revere City Council in their salute to our flag.
(inaudible) And the United States of America, to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible). Thank you.
Role call of the members, Councilor Janino is absent. Councilor Keefe?
Here.
Here. Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Here.
Here. Councilor Novoselfsky?
Here.
Here. Councilor Patch is absent. Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here. Councilor Rizzo?
Here.
Here. And Council President Guanasso?
Here.
Here. Coram is present. Madam Clerk, prior to this evening's meeting, I have some housekeeping to inform the public and those at home. First, Councilwoman Jessica Janino has offered her apologies. She's out on a work trip, and she's had this scheduled, so we wish her good luck with her job effort. And second, Joanne McKenna is enjoying a long planned trip to Italy with her sister, and we wish her well, and buongiorno to our dear friend. And finally, Charlie Patch, a counselor who's home taking care of his son, who's preparing for another procedure tomorrow morning. So we offer our prayers to Charlie and his family for a speedy recovery for his son, and we hope that everything goes well tomorrow.
Mr. President?
And one other thing, prior to this evening's meeting, I got a very, very interesting email from the fire chief. And the fire chief made mention of a situation that he said was deserving of recognition. Now, the individual that we're talking about doesn't know this is about to happen, so we just kept it a little secret between myself, the city clerk, and the fire chief. And so, at this particular time, I would like to ask Councilor George Rotundo if you would please come up to the president's desk.[154.69][154.69](laughter) And this certificate of commendation reads, "During the evening of May 22 following the city council meeting, you exhibited the true definition of a good Samaritan by saving the life of an individual who had overdosed near City Hall parking lot by administering knock can and reviving this person prior to his arrival of the Revere Fire Department. In acknowledgement of your lifesaving action, special recognition is hereby accorded to George J. Rotundo Jr., City Council at Large. Witness whereof, this certificate of commendation is gratefully bestowed by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this third day of June in the year of our Lord, 2019, in the Independence of the United States of America, 242nd, signed by Ashley E. Melnick, City Clerk, and also signed by Arthur F. Guanasso, City Council President."[217.34][217.34](applause)
Good job, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you so much, Arthur. Thank you, Chief. Being a nurse, having been a medic, this is something that we do. I appreciate you honoring me with this, I truly do. It's not necessary, I do appreciate it. I'm glad that everything worked out for that person, I hope they get the help that they need. And I'm thankful to the Revere Fire Department, the Revere Police, and the state police, who were all there working in concert. And again, if this doesn't tell you that, you know, knock can's important, I don't know what does. So thank you all once again. Thank you, Arthur.[255.45][255.45](applause)
Chief, great job. Thank you so much. That was a very good thought.
Come in.
Madam Clerk, Councilor Rizzo has asked for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just very briefly, at our last meeting on May 20, I had some notes in front of me to acknowledge a special point in time in our history, but I was, regrettably, I was not able to do it. So I wanted just to acknowledge that on May 21, 2019, marked the 100th anniversary of the approval of the 19th Amendment to the United States, to the U.S. Constitution granting women's right to vote. In 1865, at the conclusion of the Civil War, Susan B. Anthony, amongst others, petitioned for universal suffrage to prohibit the states from disenfranchising any citizen on the basis of sex. Unfortunately, it took 54 years, but finally Woodrow Wilson signed that into law, as I say, on May 21, 1919, and it has made, obviously, the nation what it is today. So just as a quick follow-up, in recognition of Susan B. Anthony's contributions, the school committee, in their wisdom, named the Susan B. Anthony Middle School after her, I think very, very appropriately. So tonight, I'd just like to remember that historic vote that was taken back 100 years ago that has led to such positive change in our nation. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Rizzo. Another point of personal privilege has been asked by Councilor Zambuto.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some sad news here tonight. Revere lost a piece of the city. Our friend Paul Mazzoni passed away. And, you know, Paul served the city in many ways, but he truly bleathed Revere. And I don't have many words, but I just couldn't go through the night without letting everybody know that we lost this wonderful individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Moment of silence, please.
We have a moment of silence in honor of Paul Mazzoni. Thank you. Councilor Rotundo?
I just wouldn't be right if I didn't speak about Paul. I knew him personally, took care of his father. And to know Paul is to know how proud he was of his son. And if anybody goes down to the DPW, you'll see the memorial of his son who worked there. And he was a good man, he was a gentleman. He served on many committees, on many boards here within the city. He always made it a point to say hi to me, and I know to everybody else here. And I just wanted to add my two cents on this.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of May 20, 2019.
So move.
On favor, opposed? So audit.
Calendar item number three is the zoning subcommittee report.
Councilor Zambuto will offer his subcommittee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, the zoning subcommittee met earlier this evening. There was only one item on the agenda, a special permit for Emerald Business Incorporated, DBA Roadway Inn, 309 American Legion Highway. Aside from going over all the details of the special permit, which we all did, many of us spoke about the history and the track record of the person that owns this establishment, Matt Filbin, and heaped lots of praise on him, which is well-deserved. This particular property was a blight on the city for many years, and nobody knows that better than you. And he turned this into a world-class hotel, and now he's making improvements by putting extra parking to keep more cars off the street. So he keeps doing more and more good for the city. And so, the City Council of Zoning Subcommittee voted this out unanimously, and I ask for a roll call vote on this special permit tonight.
Thank you, Councilor. You don't know how many restless nights I spent at that location prior to your ownership. I can't even tell you how many. Thank you. The shall the City Council grant the relief request to develop a parking lot at Zero Tuttle Street, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review and zoning and subcommittee? A roll call.
Councilor Janino is absent. Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Patch is absent. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Zambuto?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. The special permit is granted.
Congratulations.
Mr. President?
Councilor Zambuto?
I can ask for suspension of the rules, please.
Offer suspension of rules in hopes it does not prevail? All favor, opposed? So audit.
Reconsideration does not?
Reconsideration does not prevail. Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number four is the appointment subcommittee report.
Well, I'm the acting chair of, in place of Councilwoman Jessica Janino, and we had one item before us on the zoning, on the appointment subcommittee, Lorraine Piara to the Library Board of Trustees, and we voted that out favorably. I ask the City Council to do the same on a roll call. All in favor? Opposed? So audit, and congratulations. Do a good job for our city.[630.16][630.16](applause) Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the Point of Pines Fire Station feasibility study.
Any proponents wishing to speak? Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. We shared with you a long-awaited feasibility study for the Point of Pines Fire Station. This is an important public safety piece that has been discussed and talked about, and that I know this council has already supported through this feasibility study. And we have Winter Street Architects here with us to give a brief presentation of some of the work that they've done around the feasibility study. They did look at rehabbing the current facility, and they also looked at demolition. Their recommendation is for demolition of that, of the current structure, and to build new construction. I can't stress enough how important this is for not only the Point of Pines, but for the eastern part of our city, and in providing great public, great service and public safety to our community. I know the chief is going to speak on it a little bit, but I want to also thank Chief Bright and Deputy Chief Cheever for the great work that they've done in pushing this forward and making this a reality. We do look forward to hopefully a quick conversation so that we can get the ball rolling and get a loan order put before you for a vote. The feasibility study, we just wanted to share, but we are planning to come forward with a bond authorization in the very near future.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Chief?
Chief Bright, 400 Broadway. Very pleased to be before you with the results of the study. We've been very anxious to see this. As fire chief, the past three years, I've rarely seen firsthand the need for this facility. We've had some storm surges down along, you know, Revere Beach, the Atlantic Ocean just coming in, Mills Ave, you know, Pearl Ave, Beauchamp, you know. So what's been happening, and it's not just, you know, the 50-year storms, the 100-year storms, they're happening all the time now, is we're having simultaneous flooding occur in Beauchamp and down the Point of Pines section. So we need to be able to respond to both areas at the same time and be ready to go. We're lacking in that down the Point of Pines area, and we've been lacking since that station shut it almost 30 years ago. So we feel that the need is there, and the time is right now. The city's in a much better financial position. The need is great. I think the storm surges that we're seeing, you know, I think they're here already. You know, they're talking about 10 years, 20 years down the road. Revere is probably the worst community when it comes to being inundated with water. So, you know, I'm ringing the alarm. I think it's something that's needed, nothing less than this, and I hope the council will support us in the end. We also have the Winter Street Architects here, Paul Duran and Dana Wida, if you'd like to have.
Prior to them speaking, I just want to make it known that this is going to go over to Ways and Means Subcommittee. So if they can choose brevity over a long presentation, we'd like to see this in full detail, spelled out in a more appropriate spot in Ways and Means. That'd be great, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to come up and say something brief? Just so we won't be repetitive to the council and those at home, we do show on TV our presentations before the zoning subcommittee, so, Ways and Means Subcommittee, so it will be shown.
Okay. Well, it's a little hard for an architect to do a presentation without pictures, because that's what we do.
I understand.
But we worked with the Fire Department very hard to provide just what is needed at the Point of Pines location. It's a fairly tight site, in a flood zone. I thought I was. All right. So we do have some quick drawings to show you of the station.
Sure, okay. But we just want to keep it brief, because we're going to repeat this all over again, and we want the detail that's subcommittee.
Correct.
That's what we want.
So the gist of the station is?
Okay.
It's a three-bay station at the Point of Pines location. It's new construction. We looked at renovating the existing building, the existing building, the apparatus bay is, which is a hard ass station, frankly too small, and the building's in very poor shape. So we came up with a design that the Fire Department has approved. We did a cost study of it with professional cost estimators. It's, you know, expensive, because the fire stations are expensive buildings, but they keep getting expensive every year. So my advice to every other community I've worked in is, the sooner you make the right decision, the less it'll cost you.
Now, this is the same site that's at the old station?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the building has a community room in addition to the standard firefighting support spaces. It's got three bays to house a ladder truck, which the development of the area is large, high-rise buildings, so the Fire Department felt it was important to have a ladder truck there. The apron is very short, so we have a drive-through, intending to come off the traffic circle that's in the rear of the building. The site provides parking in the rear, and it ends up being, you know, approved by the Fire Department and what they feel they need for the site and location.
That it?
That is it.
Oh, you kept it as brief as ever. I apologize for it, because one of the things is that I really, is redundancy, you know? We go through the whole process here, then we go to the Subcommittee. You guys get worn out, we get, you know?
Yes.
We want you to go over in detail. We want our community to know what's going on, and so this will be going to committees of the whole, Ways and Means, zoning, and public safety. So you'll have the three people there, the three chairs there with their membership, and that pretty much encompasses all the council. So you'll have a full time to present this and show our community what we have in store for them.
Great, we look forward to it.
Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I'm very happy that this conversation's starting to take place, because quite honestly, it should have started about 15 to 20 years ago. May I ask you, when will this Subcommittee be held? Because I would love to know.
That's up to the chair of the three subcommittees of Ways and Means, zoning, and public safety. When they, it'll be very soon. It's not going to be drawn out of fair.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. 15 or 20 years ago, we didn't have the resources to fund that station. With the new hotels coming online now, we will have the resources. We've had, in the past several years, Franklin Street, Calumet Street, the Ammonia spill at NECO. We had 495 Boulevard, an apartment building with severe fire there. 500 Boulevard, the same thing. I think with all of the new construction, wood frame construction going on in this city right now, which is done as a matter of right in most cases, this is so sorely needed. I think to just to sit back and let it go on and on and on, we're not getting any place. And I think, I want to thank the mayor, and I want to thank Chief Bright and the deputies for putting the effort into this that they did. I think to vote this out when it comes before the Subcommittee is recognizing reality as well as right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. The three committees as mentioned. Councilor Rotundo?
We're going to Subcommittee, Councilor. Yep. In brief, this is absolutely needed, with 10,000 units that are going to be built down at one, excuse me, at Suffolk, with the units that are being built down the beach right now. I can see mutual aid being a big issue for our department with Boston, and any development that takes place in Suffolk Downs, never mind what happens over at Wonderland. I mean, no one knows what's going to go there, and, you know, quite honestly, there's probably, what, another 4,000 to 10,000 units in the mix there? That's a lot. So it's very well needed.
Thank you. Councilor Zambuto?
Just really briefly, I just need to correct the record. Suffolk Downs, the Revere side, is under 3,000 units. So I don't want the citizens of Revere to think, the citizens of Revere to think that there are 10,000 units going in Revere, because there not. So I just wanted to correct that. Thank you.
All right. Subcommittees, next order of business?
Calendar item number six, communication from the city auditor relative to the revolving funds, relative to MGL Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2.
Mr. Vizke?
Good evening, councilors. As you know, last year, part of the Municipal Modernization Act, it was required that cities and towns ordain their revolving funds as opposed to coming every year to establish them. So last year, you ordained those revolving funds. However, we're still required to come before the council to ask for the maximum spending of each of those revolving funds. So basically, what you have before you tonight is the maximum amount that we're proposing that could be spent from the adopted revolving funds from 2019. And I may have to answer any questions on that.
Thank you. That's going to Ways and Means.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the Director of Finance as it relates to a transfer request to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund free cash account.
Anyone wishing to speak on the free cash amount?
(inaudible).
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, members of the council, as we did last year?
You're in. No, you just shut it off. There you go.
As we did last year with our water and sewer free cash, we will again, this year, be asking the council to take the $2 million that we've retained in revenue and give it back to the ratepayer. This will, we're going to bring before you the actual rates of, I think, at the next council meeting, and so you'll see that reduction shown in the rates that you approve. But the first step is to actually get the transfer done from our free cash into our water and sewer accounts. So again, this is great news, great news to the ratepayer, and I look forward to the support of the council. Thank you.
Okay. This is going to Ways and Means.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to the City of Revere operating budget for fiscal year 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, members of the council, I am pleased to be before you and submitting our fiscal year 2020 budget. It is a comprehensive document, as you'll see. And before I go into a little bit of what's included, I want to thank all of my department heads first, everyone that put their time and effort and energy into making this a great document. I also want to thank our financial team, especially City Budget Director Rich Vizke and his team, Director of Finance George Anzoni, and of course, our Human Resources Director John Viarella. They were instrumental in making sure that this budget got to you on time in the fashion that it's in. The good news is that this is a balanced budget. It does not require any additional money coming out of stabilization or out of free cash. We are making significant investments as well. A couple, just a couple of important things that are happening. We have additional police officers that are included in this year's budget. We have additional code enforcement personnel, and we have an investment in our recreation department around the opening of a community center at the Garfield School. As you recall, during my State of the City, we talked about using that space as a true community center space, which it was intended for. This budget includes the necessary resources to make that happen. We are looking, we are looking forward to having that happen hopefully in the late summer, early fall. Again, I have to thank the team that put this together, because the included with your budget is a five-year forecast. One of the items that we just talked about, the Pines Fire Station, is included in that forecast. We have a capital improvement plan, and we have our financial policies. And all that you see that's before you tonight is what has kept and allowed the city to get an improved bond rating, our highest ever, and it will continue our practice of using best practices in the, in the City of Revere. So I know there will be additional conversation about each budget, but we are excited to get that before you, get it before you in more than enough time for there to be review, and if there are any general questions, you know, we're here, we're here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. This is going to Ways and Means, and the chairman of Ways and Means has already established a dates for this particular review, and they will be posted as the chairman makes them available.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Councilor Guanasso that the mayor request the city solicitor and city planner to draft a zoning ordinance amendment for a moratorium covering a one-year period relative to the conversion of single to two-family dwellings in all zoning districts in which two-family dwellings are allowed.
Members of the council, if I may, this here has been an important part of what's happening to our community. I see all too often in a review, site plan review, and I see a board of, a zoning board of appeals meeting, people requesting to come up and ask for their single families to be converted over to two families. That's created more problems within our community than the building of a high-rise of 40 or 50 apartments, because these things are happening very, very frequently, and we have no awareness of what's going on. I think we have to put a foothold on this particular item. I have to have, I think we have to stop and slow it down to at least have a review so that people have an opportunity to take place. Now, I see what's happening here. People come in, they buy a property, and within months, they want to convert it to a two-family. Never seen this happen before in all the years I've lived in this city, and I've lived here a long time. And I see that this is a new mindset now, that people come in, automatically want to convert their property into a business. And that's what's, the fabric of our community, the neighborhood of our community, is deteriorating based on these efforts. So I look forward to this being approved by the council, and I want to see speedy action by the city solicitor and the city planner to get resolution of this. Councilor Rotundo?
So just, I'm hearing two different things. I'm trying to figure out what was said exactly. So right now, they want to...
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor request the city solicitor and city planner to draft a zoning ordinance amendment for a moratorium covering a one-year period relative to the conversion of single to two-family dwellings in all zoning districts in which two-family dwellings are allowed.
Members of the council, if I may, this here has been an important part of what's happening to our community. I see all too often in a review, site plan review, and I see a board of, a zoning board of appeals meeting, people requesting to come up and ask for their single families to be converted over to two families. That's created more problems within our community than the building of a high-rise of 40 or 50 apartments. Because these things are happening very, very frequently and where we have no awareness of what's going on. I think we have to put a foothold on this particular item. I have to have, I think we have to stop and slow it down to at least have a review so that people have an opportunity to take place. Now, I see what's happening here. People come in, they buy a property, and within months, they want to convert it to a two-family. Never seen this happen before in all the years I've lived in this city, and I've lived here a long time. And I see that this is a new mindset now, that people come in, automatically want to convert their property into a business. And that's what's, the fabric of our community, the neighborhood of our community is deteriorating based on these efforts. So I look forward to this being approved by the council. And I want to see speedy action by the city solicitor and the city planner to get resolution of this. Counselor Rotundo.
So just, I'm hearing two different things. I'm trying to figure out what was said exactly. So right now, they want to allow for people that own single-family homes to turn their home into a two-family if they have a single with an in-law? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that people buy a single-family home. And within months, they try to convert it into a two-family by meeting a certain criteria, by going to, looking for variances from the Board of Appeals. And on too many occasions, they're getting that appeal.
I don't think we can preclude them from doing that.
Well, I want to see the actions of the city solicitor to tell me that.
What I would tell you in all honesty is that there are many people, a great many people, that buy a property in Revere. Many of them are being taxed as a two-family and have had that property as a two-family successfully for well over 100 years. And yet, when they go to sell it, they're told to remove the basement kitchen and the basement bathroom and the bedroom. That mayor after mayor after mayor after mayor have gone to their door, asked their vote, got in their house, had food in their plate at their table. And now, when they go to sell it, they're told that they have to turn it back to a one-family because of some imaginary idea? I can tell you right now, Ward Four, Ward Three, Ward Six, you have probably well over 30% of those single-family properties that you're talking about, what they call the Italian Two. And I'm going to tell you right now, you want to go down that road, you're doing it on your own. And I'm, I'm going to tell you, a lot of people have been disenfranchised because of it. And some people who've had the money have gone to court and won.
They're not talking, this is not referencing anything that's happened in the past. This is referencing to new, new proposals that come before the Board of Appeals.
But they include, and I understand what you're saying.
And if they had a property for all these years and they collected all the rent, then they should pay.
They include the old properties too often. They can't just differentiate between new and old.
You can vote against it. Vote against it, that's all.
I hear you. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. What you're saying absolutely has validity. I mean, you're seeing a lot of these singles that are turning into twos and sometimes twos turning into threes. Counselor Rotundo's on the money, though, too. How many homes in this city are being taxed as a two-family? When they go to sell it, they're told they can only sell it as a single. It's a real problem that we have. We need to get our arms around that. But what I'm finding right now, in, you know, these, you know, those problems right there are a microcosm of what's going on around the city with large-scale developments. That's the problem that I hear from people. I don't hear so much of people going, well, they want to convert from one to a two. I've been up here before zoning board of appeals meetings. And occasionally, you'll get somebody to come up and contest a house that's being used as a two-family for, you know, for decades. And they just want to legalize it. And the ramifications of that project have already been felt in that neighborhood. But these new 150, 200, in one case down on Ocean Avenue, 307 units. You know, national studies show 1.2 to 1.5 cars per bedroom. That's a fact. That's, Revere's not unique. We don't buck the national model. That's what it is. And so you put, you put all these additional people and all these additional vehicles, that's where the problem is. And I know Counselor Rotundo had asked for a moratorium some time ago in 2015. I had asked for a moratorium. It starts with zoning. We need to change our zoning. We changed the zoning a while back in the Point of Pines. Only single families could be built down there. That's all that can be built there. All in the 100-year floodplain. We got to get, you know, we got to be multifaceted here. But, you know, as I said, I think at the last meeting, I went to a meeting down on Ocean Ave, six different developers presenting projects totaling 1,400 units along the beach. That's insanity. And, you know, George Rotundo, all due respect to my colleague, Counselor Zambuto, he was accurate. There was only 3,000 in Revere, but there's another 10,000 in Boston. So, you know, if you can differentiate the site, I guess you can. But there's three or four new roads coming out of Revere. This is major, major problems. And that's the reason that we should have slowed it down and stopped it four years ago so that we could have got a grip on our zoning, so the developers aren't running rampant through the city. The developers are getting everything they want in this city right now. And the poor person with the two-family that's been paying taxes on it for decades, they get lambasted up here when they come up here and they want to convert. And it's being used as a two today, it was being used as a two yesterday. But they get lambasted, oh, no, we're not going to allow you to do that. But yet, these big developers that don't live anywhere near Revere, they wind up coming up here, I want 307 units, I want 200. Oh, sure, let's congratulate them. Let's congratulate them. It's a disgrace. So I get where you're coming from and you're, you know, but again, I think it's a microcosm of what's going on in this city. And I look forward to talking about it more in the zoning subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I raise this question based on the fact that the last two months, I've had three people trying to convert in Ward Three, and the neighbors were up in arms. And they went before zoning board of appeals, and they were going to get it.
Mr. President, I totally understand where you're coming from. Listen, I totally understand where you're coming from. I think I'm expressing frustration of what's going on on a larger scale. On the smaller scale, yeah, we need to figure out what to do with these homes. And I don't know that you're necessarily, you're talking about new buyers that come in, they buy a single, and now they want to convert. You're not talking about the, you're not talking about your old neighbors or anything.
I'm talking about the people who live here for years, no.
And I totally understand that.
Newcomers are coming in, and they get a postage stamp for a property, and they try to scratch every amount of money out of that property. And who suffers? The neighborhood.
You're 100% accurate, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counselor Zambuto.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Listen, I, I agree with your premise of the, of the person that might have bought a new single-family or recently bought a single-family and trying to convert it to a two. And I'm 100% on board with you. But over the years, the many years that I've been up here, some people think too many. I like to think most people think not enough. And that was very nice of you. Anyhow, to make a long story not so long, I've had many, many, many people who have been paying taxes for 30, 40 years on two-families. And when they go to sell them, they can't do it. And it's almost impossible. And I've been working with a lot of people recently to try to help, some in Beachmont and some in other places. I agree that with your premise, but there's also another side to that coin. And I think my colleague to the right was talking about it. I don't want to get in tonight to a broader discussion of what should have been developed or what was permitted 10 years ago and is being built out now. We'll talk about that another time. But I look forward to dealing with this issue in the zoning subcommittee in the very near future. And maybe we can do something to help our citizens that have been here many years and to prevent any of this, as you call it, postage stamp situation from continuing, if it is in fact continuing. Thank you.
Maybe we can do it on homes bought after a certain period of time, something like that.
That's, that's fine. That's what we'll talk about in the zoning subcommittee. I agree.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Novosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I tend to agree with you in this case. But just to bring all the facts out front, what's been said tonight is only, is a half of information. Many of these single-family houses that want to go to two, many years ago before zoning, made an in-law apartment, which allowed their in-laws to live there. Then the in-laws left. Now, all of a sudden, they have an apartment that they want to rent. So technically, that apartment is illegal because it wasn't approved as a rental apartment by the City of Revere, by the Building Department and the Board of Assessors. So when the Board of Assessors, Patriot Property goes in to inspect the property, they say what you see is what you get. If they see two apartments, you get charged for two apartments. But the Building Department only has you down for one. There's a discrepancy right there because it wasn't really legally done to make that second apartment appropriate. So I want to look at this. I want to make sure everybody knows the full package. And I'm not going to get into the big package because that's another issue. And what happened down at, down on Ocean Ave when we had two, my Ward Two community meeting, that was an information meeting. The people down there were mostly upset about the traffic. We're all upset about traffic. But as was stated, 90% of the traffic is regional. We are the gateway to the North Shore. And we're getting all the people from Salem, Marblehead, Peabody, Lynn, even Sargasson sometime in some of our roads. So that wasn't a negative for the number of apartments. It was an informational meeting just to let everybody know what was going on. And the people were happy to have found out the full story of what's happening. So I tend to agree with you in this motion. I will vote for it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Counselor Rizzo alluded to, we did change the zoning down on the Point of Pines. We also changed it on the Grove section of Oak Island, on the westerly side of the tracks down there. And more recently, in July 23 of 2018, I put a motion in to change the zoning on the boatyard down there, where it's only allowed single-family homes now. So we are moving in the right direction in that respect. Part of the problem has been in this city over the years. Fellow has a single-family house. They lived there all their life. They've got a lot, maybe with 4,000, 5,000 square feet, 6,000 square feet beside their house. Kids come over, holidays, play in the lot. They put a pool in there, whatever they do. Now, all of a sudden, they're taxed. For several years, they're taxed on the lot itself at a higher rate than they were before. So what would you do? I know what I'd do. I'd build on the lot so I could justify the taxes I was paying. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. This has opened up a lot of conversation on different levels of housing. You know, when you're talking about the single turning into two, I relate very much so because it happens a lot in my ward as well. And like Counselor Rotundo mentions, there are a lot of in-law apartments. So I wouldn't want to hurt the long-term homeowner that has had that and is paying taxes on that. Typically, when they come to me for, you know, a lot of times, they'll ask if this is something to go in front of the zoning board of appeals, if I would support. And generally, if there isn't the right parking, I'm usually an absolute no. The parking requirement has to be met. And that's where I would totally agree on having the moratorium for people looking to expand, expand their current house onto a small lot, make it a two-family, have one off-street parking space, and think that that's sufficient. And, you know, I tend to disagree and usually go in front of the zoning board of appeals and tell them I'm against it. It was surprising this last ZVA meeting that I told them that, and three members still voted in favor. Very surprising. Don't know why, but I'm glad it still didn't pass. But I would be in favor of your moratorium so long as it did not hurt the current homeowners that have been taxed for many years.
It has no intention to hurt the current.
And I would be totally in favor of it then. Because that truly, when we talk about people that are overwhelming the streets, that is really what's impacting our city.
Absolutely.
That is truly what's hurting our neighborhoods.
Absolutely. No question in my mind.
You know, and I agree, there's some of the big buildings that, those are, those are different, totally different problems, and those have times for different conversations. But what impacts, you know, Ward Four mostly is those ones into twos, twos into threes, the ones that people flood with, making them twos without even going a legitimate route. So I'd be, I'd be in favor of that tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, the intention was never to hurt people who have been having their homes for years. That's not the intent. What I, what I see, and when they come to Board of Appeals, they're looking for a variance, and 90% of it is for parking. So that means that they don't have enough parking, so they're looking for a variance to allow that. And so, right again, you're crunching the neighborhood who live there that they decided that's their homes, and we're hurting them. But I think this is going to go to zoning subcommittee, and we can have a further conversation on it. I think it's worthy of comment, talking about and expressing all the views that we have shared tonight. It opens up more, a greater dialogue that's an informative one, that helps everybody. And it also sends a message out to the community that, you know, we're trying to correct some of these little glitches that have been going on for years, and nobody's addressed it. And so I look forward to going to zoning subcommittee, Chairman Zambuto's subcommittee.
Excuse me, may I speak on the motion?
You can speak on the motion.
Thank you, sir. Eric Lepidakio, 43 Tapley Avenue. The heart of your motion is fantastic. Let's minimize the damage that we're seeing with the overdevelopment of residential areas in our city. To all of the council's points, this issue starts with zoning. And what we're really looking for is a zoning change. Too often, we're seeing hundreds of units go up that we can't do anything about because that's the way that it's zoned, and it's a matter of right. I think at the heart of the issue, if we can change the zoning and look at the city as a whole, we can make a better solution going forward. Thank you.
Don't say that matter of right thing. I've got two going in my name, in my ward. One in one side of the high, one in the other. And I'm at odds. I couldn't do one thing about it. They can do it by right. And I'm sure the neighborhood weren't pleased with that. But I can't circumvent the law. I can't overrule the law. That's what it is. But I think we should work on that. I think that collectively, that's the thing we've got to do because this by-right stuff has got to stop.
Well, it's my blood, too. Thank you.
It's going to go to zoning subcommittee.
Oh, I know that. But if we voted for the moratorium last year, the year before, it wouldn't be happening.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Counselor Patch that the mayor request National Grid to install a streetlight on an existing pole at 125 Franklin Street.
I submitted this on Counselor Patch's request. And he's asked me to ask the city council if they would vote favorably for this particular motion. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to designate and post Revere Street as no heavy trucking. Signage shall be posted at either end and along Revere Street.
It seems that there's a new thing out there now that because there's so much construction going on in our community and elsewhere, they're circumventing the highway, they're coming up Revere Street. And lo and behold, one of the crossing guards, who happens to be a neighbor also on, on Revere Street, pointed this out to me. And who better to know than the crossing guard who sees these heavy trucks traversing Revere Street all day and all night while the children are trying to go to school? So she asked that I submit this to the council. And I think it's a very important one. And I think that we also have to put a little bit of an asterisk beside it that once these signs are posted, that the Revere Police Department please do the enforcement. You know, I'm not an enforcing officer. I can only help residents with these rules that come out. But the enforcement is the most important part of this. And I applaud her for sending this communication to me. And she's doing it in behalf of the schoolchildren who are going to the Parvay School. And she witnesses on a daily basis the amount of trucks. And lo and behold, to add insult to injury, the very first day that I put this motion in, there was an accident with a trailer truck on Revere Street. And it couldn't be done any quicker. So I asked for the Traffic Commission to act quickly on this and post these signs as quick as possible because there's construction everywhere, not just in Revere, and they're circumventing the highway. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. You took the words out of my mouth in regards to, we can have the signs up, but I would ask that we contact the police department to help with assisting on enforcing it. Because this isn't just Revere Street. This is a lot of the streets in our city. Broadway is another cut through, and there's not supposed to be those heavy vehicles on there. And you see them often. So I think, I think it sends us a clear message, especially if a few of these trucks are tagged and pulled over. There's a small community of trucking. They're going to communicate, hey, fellas, let's not use Broadway, let's not use Revere Street any longer. And they're going to go around the routes that they're supposed to. But this is, this is a public safety issue that needs to be taken care, taken care of immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morbeto.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess my question is whether there's a definition for heavy trucking. Because under that would be garbage trucks. So it may be logical, but that obviously, we're going to allow garbage trucks to come down Revere Street and service the areas. It's considered as, it's not a city, it's a city service, it's not a city service vehicle, but it's a vendor. So I guess my question is, is there going to be, the Traffic Commission will give definition?
Well, I think the Traffic Commission, in its wisdom, knows that garbage trucks have to go to each and every home in our community. What we're talking about is construction trucks that are these big 10, 12-wheelers that come rumbling down the street and don't have any purpose in the neighborhood. They're using it as a shortcut. Now, trucks, if you're having work done on your property, certainly, if it requires seven yards of loom to be deposited at your property, of course, a heavy truck has to go on the side.
Now, Mr. President, I understand the intent of your motion.
But I think that's what they think.
But I'm looking at it logically as someone who is interpreting the sign as a drive-by. So we, it's something we really have to be careful about because we have millions of signs throughout poles throughout the city, so.
Yeah, I say take down all the bicycle signs on Revere Street and put up the no heavy trucking signs.
So my point is, it would be if it's intended toward a specific, like, trailer. So, my point is, it would be if it's intended toward a specific, like, trailer, or, like, for instance, refrigeration trucks that go to convenience stores, they're considered heavy trucking, so I think there has to be some definition as well.
Okay. Counselor Novasowski.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of information, the signs that go up, they say no heavy trucking except for local deliveries, and that covers.
I think the Traffic Commission probably has an awareness of that, and.
That's what I have in my neighborhood.
And the Revere Police have an awareness of that also.
Yeah, I have that in my neighborhood, and I do that, so that works.
And I'm willing to forfeit all those bike signs on Revere Street, which is way too many. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor instructs the chief of police to assign police officers at the intersection of North Shore Road and Revere Street to pull traffic in both directions during peak hours and when high-traffic flows are identified. Furthermore, that the mayor request information from DOT as to the implementation of temporary lighting at Riverside on North Shore Road.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This, obviously, with the lights out at the turnaround at the Riverside of the Point of Pines area, it's creating a real problem now with traffic going in both directions, mainly traffic coming southbound on 1A. And I happen, what really gave me cause to put this motion in, and should have added Counselor Powers on to this as well. This was over the weekend, coming down 1A, and the traffic was backed up to the Wharf Restaurant, backed up to the Wharf. And so, the lighting there, obviously, you know, is being addressed, they have done their test borings, and the lights are supposed to be going up anytime, you know, pretty soon. Those will be temporary lighting until the permanent lighting can be manufactured and installed. But in the meantime, and even when the lighting, even when the temporary lighting is put up, we should be utilizing traffic enforcement, pulling traffic at peak hours. Get some police officers out there, whether it's in conjunction with the state police or our own local Revere Police Department. We need to have more than just the lighting doing the regular cycles, you know? There's some, there's some traffic implementations that I've been checking on and reviewing and thinking about over the last several months. But until anything major can happen with respect to infrastructure itself, we need to utilize manpower to pull that traffic, because people are getting extremely frustrated waiting, and now with the summer months coming, I'm afraid what might happen. So, you know, I hope that they actually do implement some manpower down there to direct traffic during, during high-volume periods, and because, again, the city is a city right now that's in gridlock. People say, well, we've always had traffic, but we never had traffic the number of hours per day that we have it now. We have it at peak hours, but this city is in gridlock almost all day long, with the exception of a few hours in the middle of the day. So hopefully, that'll be something that we can accomplish. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, I spoke with Mark Kratman, he's one of the officials over at Mass DOT. And the explanation that I received from him was that they were going to put in wood poles that they could put the lights on, they would expect to have the lights on early this week, next week. And they were, the poles that were there were a type of pole that had to be fabricated to be replaced. And that's the answer I got right from Mass Highway. I've been looking into this now for a couple of weeks to make sure it happens, and I'm sure it will happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. State your name and address for record, please.
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. Thank you, Counselor Rizzo, for putting this forward. It's an absolute safety hazard right now on North Shore Road. A lot of people are just regarding the cones, they're taking that left right through the oncoming two lanes of traffic, and it's only a matter of time until somebody gets hurt. Mass DOT has been extremely slow to respond to this, it's been over five weeks since residents could take a left onto Mills Avenue. As a result, they're going out of their way down to the Point of Pines, turn around, taking two rights to get into their neighborhood and to get home. For the first half of your motion, I think it's a great suggestion. I think this is an outside-the-box idea. I'm tired, as a resident, I'm tired of hearing that traffic's a regional issue when there's nothing we can do about it. We need to consider some new solutions, and I think that manually adjusting the traffic lights during peak hours is a great idea. We see it in East Boston. If you're coming home on 1A northbound, you see a police officer there controlling the light in Orient Heights. I'd like to see something like that on Revere Street, and perhaps that could help ease up the congestion. Thank you.
Thank you for your point. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor requests the food truck program director to appear before the city council to discuss parking arrangements with the cadre of food trucks operating in Revere.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And actually, if we can amend it, I'd be happy with just a letter, our communication to the council, to be quite honest with you, instead of having that person come up beforehand. The issue is, is that people are literally putting out signs on the middle of Broadway and so the food truck can park there, and that's a problem, especially when there was a, would appear to be a blood drive going on. But that said, you know, people shouldn't have preferential treatment, and I'd just like a response. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with this motion, but I, you know, I've gotten several calls about particular vendors that are asking, people asking me if they have permits and all. There's a con truck that's parked right in, right in front of American Legion Building quite often. I've gotten several calls about that, and, so, I mean, listen, if they're legit and they're permitted, that's one thing, but transient vendors' permits are a thousand dollars a year. And, you know, if businesses are being affected by someone pulling up a truck, that's not what this is supposed to be about. We're supposed to take care of our businesses, so not let somebody just pull up and start selling stuff off the street. So, if they have a transient vendor's license and they're paying a thousand bucks a year, that's one thing. But if they're not, then we got to, we got to have some enforcement on this. Thank you.
Counselor Rotundo.
I think based upon what Counselor Zambudo said, that perhaps, second thought, it might be best to have that person come before us.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the city council award certificates appreciation to Nick Malazin, Joyce DiNuccio, Jane Rizzo, Debbie West, Sophia Forgioni, Pam Anderson, Eric Lampadecchio, Rose Napolitano, Heather Ledger, Kelly Edmonds, in honor of Valari, Chris Salerno, for their efforts in making Revere Senior Prom a very successful event.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll save the majority of my comments for that night, but I think it speaks for itself. They've done an excellent job, and they should be recognized accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.